It is 7:01 on Wednesday, March 26th, and I'll call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I have with me in the room from the zoning board of appeals, Rob Scott, Jean Zahn, and myself, Sarah Melish. We also have in the room Sue Feldberg from the planning board. We have on Zoom John Veneras from the zoning board of appeals, who's our fourth member. We also have Mark Resnick, the town planner, and Sharon Bianchi, the administrative for the ZBA. So as Mr. Globsky is aware, because we only have four members here tonight, the vote needs to be unanimous. We will discuss it. And if there's a sense that it's not going to be unanimous, you would have the right to continue it the next month, okay? Hope that won't be necessary. I circulated to the board a copy of the prior special permit that we issued. So last year, we issued, about this time, a special permit and a variance. At that point in time, the applicants were intending to renovate an existing home. Things have changed, and now they are intending to lease. Okay. So with that, I will move to open the public hearing to the application of Charles William Epps and Caitlin Connolly Epps for a special permit under sections 5.4, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary to raise the existing single-family dwelling and reconstruct a new single-family dwelling, which will increase the existing rear setback nonconformity of the dwelling and increase coverage by structures and impervious surfaces, and variances under sections 5.4 and 12.3.3 of the zoning bylaw, and any and/or other relief as may be necessary for a new side setback nonconformity for the primary structure to allow the connection of the existing detached accessory garage to the primary structure, make it accessible for a disabled child, and to allow coverage by structures of 15.2%, where 15% is allowed at 26 Proctor Street, assessors map number 16, lots number 19 and 24 in District E, filed with the town clerk on February 24, 2025. Do I have a second to open the meeting?
My second.
Sean seconds. Take a vote. Rob?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
John? Don?
Yes, yes.
Sarah votes yes. Okay. With that, who would like to commence the presentation of this application?
I will, Mark Globsky. I was here last year on behalf of the Epps, who are here tonight, Trey and Caitlin Epps. And I'm here also with Mike Tartamella from Patrick Ahern Architects and Emily Pothier from my office. And thank you for being here for one agenda item. We had a site visit, as you all know, last night, and we had a chat with your chairperson, who indicated that the board isn't inclined to grant variances for coverage by structures. We think we had a very good argument, and we spent some time today trying to determine how we were going to proceed. However, Mike has convinced us that the plans can be tweaked slightly, and we can get down below 15%. So the first thing we're going to do is respectfully ask for leave to withdraw that portion of the application, so that we're essentially only asking for the relief that we were given last February, which is a special permit and a variance relating to the garage becoming part of the principal building. And just to refresh everybody's recollection, the property is nonconforming in several respects. It contains 36,333 square feet of land. It's obviously in District E, which requires 90,000 square feet. And the house that's existing on the site is presently four and a half feet or so from the rear lot line, and also exceeding the limitation on coverage by structures and impervious surfaces. It's currently at 26.9%. So what we're proposing is that number changed to 28.4%. And as I explained before, and as the decision that you probably read indicates, the reason for the variance is that by connecting the garage to the main house in the property, it becomes principal structure, which is subject to a greater setback than the garage was subject to. It's not obviously going to change its location, but the board recognized last year that the lot is unusually configured lot. It's L-shaped, and it jogs, and that's the location of the garage. So there are unique conditions that affect the property and the need for that variance. At this point, I guess the easiest thing would be for Mike to explain why we're not moving forward with the relief that was granted last year and why we're here tonight. And the Epps might weigh in on that as well.
Sure, thanks, Mark. So again, Mike Tartamella from Patrick Ahern Architects. So we were before you last year for a renovation and restoration of the existing house. However, after going through the process of developing drawings for that, we determined that, based on the existing foundation and also the lack of adequacy in the existing structure for accessibility need, it was determined that the most prudent effort would be to reconstruct the house in its existing location, albeit with adjustments that would accommodate both accessibility and a little bit more of a contemporary foundation underneath that would be structurally sound. So we pursued that with Trey and Caitlin and developed a plan that's before you this evening, vis a vis, as Mark said, connecting the garage still and following in the same spirit of the plan that was approved this time last year. I think to address the lot coverage question, we've devised a way that we've discussed with our clients that we can get under the requirement of 15% and come back to you with that, with a certified plot plan from the surveyor, with subtle adjustments that would be needed, subject to the approval this evening.
I think that one of the structural issues that I heard a lot about was the fact that eight feet is needed for the elevator between floors.
Yeah.
And it just didn't exist.
Yeah, I mean, there were significant issues with the existing framing, ultimately trying to create the necessary clearances and egress spaces that are required for their daughter. And in addition to that, creating a necessary private suite for her that would accommodate both spatial needs, access, and the ability to install certain provisions for her to be able to function in that space. The existing house, as we discussed, had a very insufficient foundation, which basically caused us to come to the conclusion that that needed to be really addressed, which then the entire house became compromised at that point. So it was a product of a lot of things that came together post the development of the schematic drawings, which were presented for approvals last year, which is why we're back in front of you today for the adjustments to what was originally approved.
But again, this project isn't about making a bigger, grander house. As you've seen from the drawings, it essentially is almost indistinguishable from the house that's there. It's only, it's going to be, in fact, a little less high. It's going to be 22-plus feet high in an area where there could be 35 feet. It could be McMansionized, and that's not the direction this is going in. This is all about accessibility. And were it not for the need for accessibility, we wouldn't be here.
I think just be also, you know, the clients love the house. They love the property. And, you know, we were really tasked from the beginning with maintaining the mass and scale of what was there. So we've taken that really thoughtful approach in creating a little bit more of a house that lives the way we live today, but still, I think, calls a little bit to the context of where we are. And I mean, as Mark said, it's basically the same house. The architectural vocabulary of it hasn't changed. And realistically, the connection to the garage is probably the most serviceable part of the house to be able to give them the ability to manage the grading that's on site where the driveway arrives, and also to be able to bring their daughter in and out in a covered area instead of, you know, any climate weather having to deal with rain, snow, et cetera.
I don't know whether either of you have anything to add at this point.
I think the only thing that I would add is, seconding what Mike said, we love this house. When we bought the house, we thought that this was our forever home. And maybe we make some small tweaks and adjustments for her. That was in 2000. We've had 2020, sorry, 2020. As we talked about last night, we've had an ongoing research study for Avery because she's the first person ever discovered with her genetic condition. There's one other in the world also named Avery Coinciden. Her condition is similar to childhood ALS. It's a degenerative condition. When we bought the house, she was able to walk around the first floor supported by a walker. She lost the ability to walk with a walker three or four years ago, and now can operate with a wheelchair. We are fighting to try to stop the progression of this, but we have to be realistic about how our condition's going to evolve. And so it's been amazing partnering with Mike and the team to think about how we design spaces that can accommodate not just where she is now, but where she's going. Currently in a self-powered wheelchair, she may need to be in a powered wheelchair in the future. We may need live-in care for her in the future. And so to be able to design a home that could accommodate all of those needs has been what we've been working on over the past year as we got greater clarity about where her condition is going. And that was, along with the required ceiling heights, along with the need for egress in and out of the home as we better understood her condition is really the reason why we, another reason why we had to make more fulsome revisions to the project.
Sean, do you have any questions?
No, not at this moment.
John, do you have any questions?
I do not. I'll just point out that, you know, I completely understand that that lot, the shape of that lot is very unique. So I understand why, you know, they're before us today. So otherwise, I have no questions on the proposal. Thanks.
Thanks. I think that Sean and I were both at the site visit yesterday, and there were orange or red, I don't know, sticks along the ground, which showed where the new footprint of the house is. And when you looked at it, it was very minimal change. It was a little larger, but maybe a couple of feet here and there, and maybe at the corners, there were these that they squared off. That was kind of the net result of the changes, plus the connector between the house and the...
I think that was the biggest change.
If it's not necessary, then...
What we're hoping is that you will be able to make a decision this evening, and we will then give you the revised plans. But I just asked Mike whether or not it would be appropriate to explain to you how he's getting under the 15%.
That would be great.
Well, let me also ask this question.
Yes.
Have we formally pulled the original request for the 15.2?
I asked for it. I don't know that they voted on.
Okay. So, you know, obviously, we would like to keep that. However, we've devised a way that doesn't compromise the house entirely. But that was what we had submitted. And if that's not an option, then we're prepared to make an adjustment. But is there a straw poll that we should take?
I can ask the board.
Or is the sentiment of the board that that's really not a path we should pursue?
We can discuss that as...
In that vein, I guess I would suggest, since this is reopening this issue a little bit, that what it would be would be a de minimis bit of relief because it would be 2/10 of 1% of lot coverage that we're going over. It's 72 feet or something like that. And your chairman last night indicated that that was likely to be an issue, and consequently, we pulled a fire drill and did what we could today to make sure that we weren't going to lose a month by having it be continued. And so we are prepared to submit plans that will get rid of that 72 feet if we have to.
So last fall, we had come before us two different applications for variance for coverage of structures, both of which we denied because the opinion was that they were attempting to build too large a house on the lots. Both of those lots were square. And in that case, both applicants came back to us and reduced the scale of their plans in order to conform with the coverage of structures. This before, as Mr. Globsky said, is 72 square feet over the maximum allowed coverage by structures. This lot is quite weird. It's got zigs and tags. They own a lot across the street, which can't be included because of the street that goes in between the two lots. This situation is also a little different in that they need more square footage in the house to accommodate a disabled child, get an elevator, and everything else. So what's the sense of the board on the variance?
Sarah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, for coverage by structures.
Yeah, so I mean, I would assume that the new design reflects all of the current and future accessibility needs, and that's why it exceeds very slightly. And for that reason, I don't see it as an issue.
My concern was is that last year, they came before us, and they didn't exceed the coverage, which supposedly was sufficient. So that's kind of...
But that was the existing house.
Right.
It's very old, and this one is being specifically built for accessibility.
What's your sense, Sean?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with it, I mean, to be honest. Because it's a very minimal. I don't have anything else to add. I'm kind of okay with it. It's so minimal on the coverage.
And the fact that it's different scenarios and represented us before, it's less, it's unlikely to be considered precedent for future people. And before, it's about similar circumstances. Is that a key one?
Yeah.
Yeah, given the circumstances in the future. I think if it sets a precedent, it would be a relatively good precedent.
For accessibility.
Correct.
Yeah, with that on that. Accessibility-wise, I'm kind of agreeing with...
And I think we had an application before us on...
We have the...
Tanglewood.
Yes, I was going to say...
And I believe that was also, that might have been a coverage issue. In that one, we did not issue a variance, but we did it under the, whatever the section is for accessibility. It was before, it was in our bylaw, but we went under that section of the law rather than a variance.
I'm trying to remember, but I thought that we did have...
Yeah, yeah. But that was totally outside of the scope of the bylaws because at that point, that was a state requirement.
Right, I mean, if you had a house that was already, like, let's say, over the impervious surface requirements, and somebody had to put in a series of ramps, maybe front and back, that obviously would be impervious, but it's exempt because of Mass General Law. So it wouldn't even take into account because it's for accessibility. So if we compared it to something like that, then I think it would be okay.
Yeah, and if the structure already exceeded the coverage requirements, then it would be a special permit to increase it. But because it doesn't exceed it, it's a variance. Okay. So it sounds like perhaps we'll be okay without change.
That's great news.
At this point, I'll ask if there's any member of... I don't see members of the public here to speak on this application. Is there any member of the public on Zoom who wishes to speak on this application? I don't see any member of the public. But in case I'm missing it, if so, raise your hand in Zoom. No, I think we're okay. So I move to close the public hearing and allow the board to enter into deliberations on this application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, second. Well, Rob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. This is a delay getting to Utah, apparently.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have...
I'm still here.
Okay, good.
Don't go anywhere.
So what we're looking at is, we're just... We're looking at the special permit, which is to increase the existing rear setback, which is already nonconforming, right? And we're increasing that just slightly under a foot. And then we have an increase of coverage by structures and impervious surface from 26.9% to 28.4%, so 1.5%. It's about 600 square feet, which I'm presuming is realistic given the need for more hardscape for somebody in a wheelchair. You agree with that?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes.
So you feel this is not more detrimental than the existing nonconformities?
That's correct, Sarah.
Rob?
Agreed.
John?
Agreed.
Okay. Then we have the variance, which is the weirder one, which is because they're attaching the garage to a primary structure. The garage was in the side setback already for an accessory structure, but they're now connecting it to the primary structure. So now it becomes a setback for the primary structure. Therefore, it's a new nonconformity, and therefore, it's a variance. Right? Get that ready?
You did, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we have the coverage by structures, which I think we've already discussed. So our standard is that it's in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. You're in agreement with that?
Yes, Miss.
Yes.
Okay.
Flash your headlights up here, Gary.
I don't know if we're really seeing him or if it's an image.
I think it's just an image.
That's what I think, too. Thank you. So you ready to have me make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm going to make two motions, one for the special permit and a separate one for the third. I move to approve the application of Charles William Epps III and Caitlin Connolly Epps for a special permit under sections 5.4, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary to reconstruct a nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot, which will encroach a foot further into the rear setback and increase the coverage by structures and impervious surface from 26.9% to 28.4%, where 25% is allowed to allow ADA accessible hardscape and to alter a nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot. At 26 Proctor Street, assessors map number 16, lots number 19 and 24. I guess it's really only lot number 19, right? Lot number 19 in District E, filed with the town clerk on February 24, 2025, based on a finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. The proposed alteration in the coverage by structures and impervious surface requirement, additional encroachment into the rear setback and altering the nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot will not be substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located in the existing nonconforming structure and coverage by structures and impervious surface and the requirements and conditions of section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following condition. The structures and impervious surfaces are located as depicted on the proposed block plan of land prepared by Hancock Associates dated 2025? Is that the right date? Oh, it was January...
2020.
Is it 2?
2025. There's a January 131, 25, but revised 2025.
Revision dated 2025. The lot coverage by structures and impervious surfaces does not exceed 28.4%. The construction proceeds substantially in accordance with the zoning board of appeals plans prepared by Patrick Ahern, presented to the ZBA on 3/26/25. I couldn't find a date on those plans. Is that correct?
On your plans.
Yeah.
March 24, 2025? Oh, I'm sorry. The filing date? No, the date of the plan.
I don't think they were dated.
Should have been cover sheet here.
I'll just say presented to ZBA on 3/26/25?
3/26/25, yeah.
Okay. Illustrative site plan, A-1.1, proposed first floor plan, A-1.2, proposed second floor plan, A-1.3, proposed roof plan, and A-3.0 and A-3.1, proposed exterior elevations. Do I have a second?
My second.
Sean seconds. Any discussion? Take a vote. Rob?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Approved.
And Sarah first. 4-0, you go. I further move to approve the application of Charles William Epps III and Caitlin Connolly Epps for variances under section 5.4 and 12.3.3 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary to construct a connector with lift between the existing nonconforming accessory garage, thereby converting the garage from accessory structure to a primary structure subject to primary structure setbacks, resulting in a new nonconformity encroachment into the side setback of 3.5 feet, where 20 feet is required, and lot coverage by structures of 15.2%, an excess of 72 square feet, where 15% is allowed. based on a finding that the location of the existing garage and lot coverage by structures owing to circumstances related to the shape of the land and location of the existing structures, especially affecting such land and structures, but not generally affecting the zoning District E in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, by not allowing the applicants to create an ADA compliant residence for the disabled young daughter, which is required to remain on the property. And that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Based on the condition, the residential structure renovation is constructed in accordance with the plans listed above under the conditions for the issuance of a special permit, and the lot coverage by structures does not exceed 15.2%. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rob, seconds. Any discussion? We all agree it's a hardship?
Yep.
So you want to approve it? Okay, take a vote. Rob?
Yes.
John?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
And Sarah votes yes. I will write it, since I wrote the last one. Who would like to review it?
I can review.
Sean will review. Don's that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now just start building in less than a year.
Thank you.
They've been championing it for this.
I'll be watching for my house.
I know. I'll be walking over that new little walkway behind Cooper with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Sean.
Take care.
Okay, we have ministry view. We can't, we can't vote on the February 26th because we don't have enough people here who are at that meeting. And I have some changes to the ones from January. So I'm suggesting we don't vote on them tonight.
That's right.
Is that okay?
Yep.
I felt that under the 7 Highwood Road section, there was no explanation about presenting the application. It seemed to be missing, so I didn't feel we should approve. Anything else? We have one application for next month, which is 19 Smith Point. If you may recall, we approved a pool at 19 Smith Point not that long ago.
Yeah, that's my.
This is for a pickleball. And it's, it's very clear on the plans that were submitted. It's a pickleball court, not a generic sports court. So I asked that the public hearing notice specify it as a pickleball court. And it's pretty close to number 15. So I'm wondering if we should request the applicant to get a letter from the owner of 15, accepting it, or is that asking too much? We can ask, right?
Yeah, we can ask. My guess is that the owner of 15 is going to show up.
Well, the plan shows it's 179 feet from the house, but it's very close to the lot line. Okay. That's all I have.
I don't have anything.
Okay. We do have, we have somebody who's applied for ZBA, and she's apparently in Florida. And so she's not going to be interviewed by the select board until April 22nd. So I think we've got one more month to get through. And Georgia's not here tonight because she had to recuse herself because she's in a butter of the Epps. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
John moves to adjourn. John, are you willing to adjourn?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes.
And yes.
Thanks.
Have a good one.